All right. Welcome, everyone. I call the 2,395th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. I don't have a gavel, but I can make noise with something else. Due to inclement weather in the Milwaukee area, this meeting is being held by a Zoom video conference only. As the storm may cause power outages, if a majority of council members lose power, thankfully, we all seem to have power at the moment. And we are unable to participate in the meeting. Council will adjourn and move any items not addressed to future agendas. The public may participate in this meeting by joining Zoom. The meeting is being recorded and will be aired later on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Cable Channel 30 in city limits. There will be opportunities for the public to speak during this meeting. If you are interested in speaking, please let staff know by emailing OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the email inbox and Zoom participant list and chat. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Comments may be emailed to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. We ask that all Zoom participants who intend to speak label their Zoom username to show their first and last names for the record. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the city recorder at 503-786-7502. Servicios de traducción en español está disponible cuando se ha solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información llama al al secretario de la ciudad a 503-786-7502. Translation services are also available in other languages. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapuya et cetera treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. Tonight's announcements. Nominations continue to be accepted for the 2023 Volunteer of the Year Award. Anyone who resides in Milwaukee or is a member of a nonprofit or business that serves Milwaukee is eligible. Those making the nomination are asked to discuss the nominee's volunteer work and how it has improved Milwaukee. Nominations can be submitted online until February 14. City manager Anne Ober hosts an open door session on Friday, February 26 from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. here at City Hall. No sign up is necessary. Those attending are seen on a first come, first served basis. Sessions are limited to 15 minutes. Help improve habitat at Spring Park by volunteering on Saturday, January 27 from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Spring Park is located at Sparrow Street and 19th Avenue in the Island Station neighborhood and is the gateway to Elk Rock Island. Volunteers will take donated Christmas trees to the river to create fish habitat while also removing weeds and planting native plants. Save the date for the Harvey Street Improvements Open House on Wednesday, January 31 from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. in the community room at City Hall. The project will turn parts of Harvey Street into a neighborhood greenway, construct sidewalks, and update water and storm systems. This project is part of the city's Safe Access for Everyone program. For more information about these events, please visit the city's homepage at MilwaukeeOregon.gov or call 503-786-7555. No one else had any announcements to make? Okay. Then I will move on to community comments. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community member comments regarding city business that is not already on the agenda. Before we begin, is there any follow-up from the January 2nd community comments, Ms. Ober?
Hi, Mayor. The only comments that were made were about the electrification discussion that was happening that night on the agenda. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'm not seeing, oh, no, we do have attendees. Do we have some people wanting, or we do have someone wanting to comment? Okay. So I'll read my little script. For those who wish to speak, please submit a comment card. That's not applicable here. Please use the raise hand reaction alert staff you wish to speak, and when instructed to begin, click the microphone option to unmute yourself. If you are calling in through Zoom and would like to make a comment, dial star nine to raise your hand. You may also submit a comment via email to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. Before you make your comments, please state your name and city of residence for the record. If you would like the city to follow up with you, please submit your contact information to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. As council has other business items on the agenda this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because information provided during community comments may be new, this is not the time for discussion, but the city manager will respond at the next council meeting to those comments that require follow-up. So I have two people who wish to speak, and the first hand I saw was Jacob Sherman, so I will start with Jacob.
And I will promote, let him to talk, and I will run a three-minute timer on my phone.
That's great. Thank you.
I think it'll be, if not, I'll indicate.
Okay. Well, Jacob, yeah.
Hi there. You can hear me?
I can hear you.
Great. Thanks. Good evening, Mayor Beatty, city councillors. My name is Jacob Sherman. I use he/him pronouns. I live in the Ardenwald neighborhood. I'm also chair of the Planning Commission, although I'm here attending as a personal citizen tonight. And wanted to draw your attention to the public comments that was submitted. Mr. Stauffer included them as part of your agenda this evening. And decided, I decided to take time out of the schedule to show up and make sure that there was some discussion over this. Watching my friend and his four-year-old daughter nearly get hit by a car on one of our neighborhood greenways was a frightening experience, and I think really just here tonight to ask you all to hopefully pay more attention to this issue and encourage you to talk with the city manager about, hopefully directing the engineering department to look more closely at this issue. I know that as part of the Ardenwald North Project, the engineering department hired Kittleson and Associates. And they indicated in their report that if crash trends emerge related to site distance challenges at intersections along the greenway, you know, we could consider stop signs and other things like that. I'd like us to not wait for a crash to occur, like the one that nearly did, and instead be proactive. I know you all are very busy people, and I know staff are very busy as well. But I would rather us be proactive here and not wait till we have a serious crash or a fatality on our hands when we could spend a relatively insignificant amount of funding to address these problems in a proactive way. Thank you for your time tonight. I look forward to talking to you more about this topic.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Sherman. And the other person whose hand is up is Elvis Clark.
Hello?
Hello, Elvis. I can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and councillors. I first wanted to congratulate the city on an awesome winter solstice that occurred back in December. That was a really good, well-attended occasion, and it was a real community spirit event. And that's another thing I wanted to, I submitted testimony today for, about the discussion that occurred on January 2 with Bob Jinxing, the Citizen Utility Board, and I, I thought it was a little bit, it didn't give the proper view of what has been going on in the gas versus electric industries and that going to renewable energy is costing rate increases in the electricity, and it threatens to do so in the gas side. But so I got my written testimony there you can look at. Anyways, I hope the council will be a little more balanced in looking at that issue of gas versus electricity and not be too draconian in cutting off energy choice for the residents of Milwaukee. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing anyone else wanting to comment. Are you, Mr. Stauffer? No. Okay. Okay. Um, we will then turn to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda only has two items left after a few were stricken. The December 12, 2023 study session minutes and a motion to approve the 2024 council committee assignments. On the first item, I intend to pull that off of the consent agenda and have us discuss that when we discuss minute taking, which is toward the end of our agenda. And on the second item, we had a few minor edits, and we have a replacement document, and I'll turn it over to Assistant City Manager Emma Sager if she wants to elaborate on that.
Thank you, Mayor, and my apologies, folks. I'm gonna blame it on the impending snowmageddon that distracted me on Friday. What I should have done when I updated the document was, there were two columns. It was a 2023 designee and a 2024 designee, and I should have put our decisions in the 2024 column, and instead I just edited the 2023 column, which made no sense. So the new version you have has the two columns appropriately filled in. There were also a few that you'd asked me to look into. One is the Childcare for All Task Force, and the other is the Social Services Roundtable. I haven't heard back and got a firm answer on those, so I'm still working on it. But we've talked about this being a living document that can be updated, and the other business we'll talk about tonight, I'm sure will also have implications for this. So those were the main changes, and my apologies for the editorial oversight.
Thank you. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve item B on the consent agenda as amended or as substituted?
I move to approve item B as edited.
I second.
It's been moved and approved. It's been moved and seconded to approve item B on the consent agenda as edited. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no? None heard? It passes unanimously. Item B on the consent agenda. Thank you. A council vacancy and special election resolution, and this will be presented by the city recorder.
Thank you, Mayor Beatty, and council, good evening. So I've got a couple items back to back here, all stemming from the resignation of Councillor Desi McDeemos on January 2. As council is aware, Councillor McDeemos resigned effective immediately. And in response to that, staff prepared a couple of staff reports. The first one here, as directed by the city charter, asks council to adopt the resolution acknowledging and declaring position three, council position three, to be vacant, and then calling for a special election. There'll be some more details I'll talk about in my next report, but this first action is fairly straightforward at this point. The resolution, I think, calls for what needs to be done. In the report, there was a copy of the statement read by councillor, former councillor McDeemos, as well as the election candidate information packet, which should be fairly familiar to council. It has been updated. I ran those dates by the county clerk, and they gave a couple edits which are included in the document that you have in the report. So with Adam, I am open to any questions, but the staff request is for council to adopt the resolution.
Are there any questions for Mr. Stauffer? I'm not seeing any. In which case I would entertain a motion.
Well, I'll move to approve the resolution. Sorry, I thought councillor Cozerbuddy was looking for an unmute button for a moment.
I was trying to figure out how to, like, what the motion is exactly, to word it properly?
You got, I mean, it's page five of the script, but if you don't have the script up, it's, you know, I move to approve the resolution acknowledging the resignation of councillor McDeemos, noting a vacancy on council, and calling for a special election.
They can wait, councillor Savengers.
Would you like me to restate the motion, Mayor? I move to approve the resolution, acknowledging the resignation of council president McDeemos and calling for a special election to fill the vacancy position, or the vacant position.
Well, I can second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution acknowledging the resignation of councillor Desi McDeemos noting a vacancy on council and calling for a special election. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Say no? None heard? It passes unanimously?
Thank you, council, for that, and there will be more information on this in the coming days. We'll make sure that there's social media posts and information in the pilot, but anyone interested in running for the interim council position, the filing window, I believe, is February 12 to March 13, or give or take there, those dates. So basically, the month of February to March will be the filing deadlines. The special election that has now been triggered by this resignation, this council action, will be held on May 21, which is Oregon's primary date. There's an explanation of how we got to that date in the report. The short answer is it basically takes four months for an election to be held. The person elected at the May election will fill the position until the term expires, which is December 31 of this year. And so whoever is elected will have an opportunity to, if they so choose to run for election, reelection in the fall, or somebody else will run for election position three and start a new term beginning January 1 of 2025. Yeah, there'll be more information on that in our usual election process. So Mayor Beatty, if it's okay, I'll then transition to the next item on the agenda.
Please.
We have my staff report open for, but I may have to close the other one. Hold on just a second. Let me grab my other, I have PowerPoints for like five of the six things I have on the agenda tonight, and again, I do apologize that you end up with so many reports from me this evening. May forbid nighttime reading in any event. Okay, so the next item, here we go. All right. Okay, so the companion item that we have for council regarding, relating to the resignation of councillor McDeemos is the interim appointment process. So as I just mentioned, the Charter and state elections law call for certain steps for calling a special election to fill the vacant position. The city charter also calls for a process for the city council to name interim, an interim council member to fill position three until the special election can be held. And as council knows, we've been through this a few times in the last few years, most recently in May-June of 2022. And so what we have prepared, what our staff has put together here for council to consider and provide feedback on is essentially the same process as was conducted back in May of '22 tonight, and as you see on the graphic there on the slide, council is tonight asked to weigh in on, or adopt the resolution calling for the special election, so that's done. And now we're asking you to weigh in on the interim process. So if council gives your consensus approval, no formal motion is necessary, but just directions is sufficient. If you give your said direction, then beginning tomorrow, but considering the weather this week, we will put out an application form online that the public, or we can provide printed copies, that anybody who lives in the city and is eligible to be on council can fill out and submit by February 5. February 5 will be the deadline for applications, and then between the 5th and 13th, staff will prepare and get copies of the applications to council. And then the February 13 special session, that's the second Tuesday, so we would convert at least part of that evening's meeting to a special session so that council may conduct interviews of the candidate, council applicants, and then consider those applications and make an appointment that evening. That's the process we've set up tonight, and that appointed interim member would be sworn down the 13th, and their first full meeting with council would be on the 20th of February. So that is the timeframe. My first question to the council at this stage is, does that sound reasonable? Is there any adjustments that council would like to make to the timeline, the schedule?
Any comments from anyone? Concerns about the timeline?
Just to highlight, Mayor, that I will be out of town on the 13th, so I'll need to participate in the process virtually, and I'll try to do that with minimal disruptions.
Okay, great. Well, you'll be on the East Coast, as I understand it, so it'll be, you'll be late in the day. Hopefully, it'll work without interfering with other things there. Any other comments or observations from councillors? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. So Scott, I think the answer is yes, the timeline works.
Great. Then I have two more questions, and one, I think, might generate a little conversation, but the first one is about the application, which was included in the packet. I didn't include a graphic or an image of it here. I can grab it, and we can share that Word document. But it's pretty much the same form we used in May of '22. I think it's been, I'm sure it's evolved over the years, but it's been a pretty standard part of this process for the last few times. So does council have any concerns or objections or edits to propose to the interim council member application form that was in the packet?
I had some thoughts about the interview questions, but I didn't have any on the actual form. Anyone else have?
And I have the question.
Their suggestions or anything on the, on the application form? Not seeing any?
Then I came a little more prepared, and I may have to stop sharing. But of these next two slides, there's a lot of text on here, so I apologize about that, but I wanted to show, oops, I want to show council questions that have been asked, and this is the oral interview segment of this. Questions that were asked, and this is the 2017 cycle, and then the next slide has the 2022 questions. So these are also in the packet, so I hope the council had an opportunity to look at them. The first question is the same on both. So what do you think are the city's most important concerns facing Milwaukee? And then the rest of them are different between the 2017 and 2022 questions. And so my general question is, what questions do you want to ask here in the 2024 process? We can discuss each of them. You can also, we do have a couple weeks to vet this and prepare for the February 13 interview. So with that, here's these ones. If everyone's had a chance, I'll go to the 22 question for the 22. So these are the 22 questions that we asked last time.
So this is the one where I had, you know, just an observation really, which is the third question is, says our two current city council goals. There was a period where we did not have a third, and I guess maybe this was during that period before we adopted parks as our third council goal. So at a minimum, I think it needs to be, I mean, probably parks should just be added to it, but at a minimum, that needs to be reworded to reflect that we do indeed have three council goals.
If we want to talk about it here, which I'm totally prepared to do, we could, I prepared this slide where we could start citing questions over and building the 24th question set, if that works for council, or so I'm hearing an interest in updating this question, this question three from '22. Is that right, Mayor Beatty? Are you proposing that?
I am. I guess I wonder, do people want to do this on the fly here, or do they want to send their thoughts to Scott, and we discuss it at the first meeting in February?
You could send me each, like, your top four, three or four, and then I can compile them and see who, and they don't have to be the ones here from the last two year cycles, but that would be a good way to do it, too, Mayor Beatty.
I guess I generally see the second set as a better set of questions, like the first set had a question about what would you do in your first six months, and I don't think that's a very fair or, you know, I mean, it's, it's not that, you know, a lone councillor has, you know, can do something radically different in the first six months, so I think it is a little bit of a wonky question. Anyway, what do people think? Do you want to try and sort this out tonight, councillor Cozerbuddy?
I think it would be good to give some time so we could think about those questions, the questions. Yeah, because I'm already thinking, like, you know, it'd be nice to have another, a question that ties how their three most important concerns facing Milwaukee gets us to like what they see as those, those goals to get us to our vision as well, based on their three most important concerns. But like, I mean, just, yeah, more time would be good to kind of articulate what we would like to see, I would say.
Councillor Massey?
Yeah, yeah, I'll send in some comments. I will tell you, question three is not a question, it's a speech, okay? And, yeah, it's, it's, it's just gotta be cleaned up. And could you go back to 2017? I think number three is, even though it's shorter, it's, it's actually three questions, and I think, I think that's a hard one, sustain, what do you think the sustainability practices of business and residents in Milwaukee is? I'm not sure I can answer that question. So I'm not sure that that's a good question. So at any rate, I'll get some things into you, but those are the ones that jump out to me that are not particularly helpful.
Shall we set a date for getting
We should.
to Scott so that he has time to turn it around and put it in the packet, and while Scott's looking at his calendar, I'll ask councillor Savengers to.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of thoughts. First one was right in line with what councillor Cozerbuddy was saying about the the top three concerns facing Milwaukee. I think that it makes a lot of sense for that to be like a connection between the interview question and then the oral interviews. So I do really like that one. Scott, if you don't mind going to the next slide. With question number three and the inclusion of all three goals, I would actually recommend not stating the three goals in that question. I think that an applicant to council should be able to go to the website or should have paid attention to some of our meetings and have a good understanding of what the council goals are. So I think that we could actually reduce the wording on that considerably by taking out the language around each specific goal. And then lastly, the question from 2017 that stood out to me was the thoughts related to the city of Milwaukee's relationship with surrounding jurisdictions? And I might just suggest that we add, what are your thoughts related to the relationship or the importance of relationship with surrounding jurisdictions? I'm particularly interested in hearing from candidates about their thoughts there.
With January 30, so two weeks from today, would that give council enough time? I probably need a work week to put those together. And then I'll add time on the February 6 during, maybe during the the end towards council reports to present. The end towards council reports to present this to council and you put the finishing touches on a set of questions.
That sound good to everyone? Okay.
Okay.
January thirtieth.
All right, well then with that, I can find the. Stop share button. It disappears on you sometime. I'm so used to two screens or the whole chambers to run these kind of things. I think uh, Mayor Beatty, that's it for item seven B then.
Okay.
I know that the next item is, is really a council matter, uh, but I do have a PowerPoint presented, uh, prepared for. The council president election item, if, if you're ready for that one.
Please go right ahead.
And I only prepared this, oops, I gotta get it. I only prepared this, um. Because I, I apologize, I failed to include, um. In the packet, uh, the script, the uh. The text for the motion that you need, uh, that you could use to uh, select. Another council president, it's probably pretty, it's pretty straightforward in motion language, but I wanted to. Have it ready just in case it's helpful. So uh, here. Goes this, you, you can all see that and I will go to this. So this is the. Pretty straightforward motion and we'll nominate whoever. Service council president, someone seconds it and then there's the usual. Vote. So with that, uh, I'll just say that the council president position is listed in the city charter and. Uh, this is a bit of an unusual moment to ask for council to elect uh, council president because usually it's triggered by an election. But uh, since we don't, haven't had an election, but the council president did resign, the position is vacant. And uh, you will forgive me if I'm being self-serving, the remedy for not having a mayor or council president present. Is that the city recorder has to start meetings and then call for the rest of council to select the chair. And to get myself out of that gig, I'd really appreciate it if you guys pick the council president, so. Uh, no pressure, but there you go.
Well, and I will say I um. I think any of the three of you would make an excellent council president. Uh, I do also uh. Feel like we need to fill the position because I will be missing at least one meeting in April. So it would be good to have a council president in place to chair that meeting. Um, so. Does anybody have anything they? Want to say about serving themselves or about nominating a colleague to serve? Uh, councillor Stavenger?
Um, I moved to nominate um, councillor Massey to serve as council president.
Okay. Councillor Massey, are you amenable to serving as council president?
Uh, do we not have to have a second?
Well, I'm, I'm not, uh, we do have to have a second, yes, yes. And I mean, I guess. Um, I wanted to just make sure you were amenable first, but um. Uh, I will second. Uh, that nomination, but um. Yeah. Am I allowed to sa- am I allowed as the chair to second things? I think I am, but um.
I think you are.
Uh, so in answer to your question, um. I am willing to serve as the interim council president. I just, is, that title just rolls off my tongue, interim council president.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? Councillor Costa body, are you? Okay, um. All right, well then, uh, it's been moved and seconded uh, to. Uh, nominate Robert Massey as the council president. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? None heard? Uh, I believe uh, councillor Massey is unanimously selected as our. Incoming council president, incoming interim council president.
I just need to clarify, it didn't actually, yes, I agree with the confetti, but I did not hear councillor Massey vote. So I'm wondering if you abstained or if you actually voted. I'm sorry you're muted.
Muted.
How many votes do you have to have to elect?
Majority.
Okay, I abstain.
Thank you.
And uh, thank you, congratulations, council president Massey.
But good catch, Anne, yeah.
The uh, the position, uh, then councillor Massey will serve until the next time it's triggered, which we anticipate to be. Uh, in June, once the results of the May twenty-first election are certified, so.
Okay, great. Great, well, thank you. Everyone for making that easy. Um, all right, next item on the agenda is a houseless services update from the city manager and. Events and emergency management coordinator, Dan Harris.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Dan, for being here with me tonight. Uh, so this is a, an update. We spoke last month about the fact that I would try and give an update every. Month to two months about what we're doing around houselessness, just to make sure that everybody's in the loop. And if anybody has any input that they have a chance to give it, well, we're doing some work with the county. Uh, so I'm gonna do a brief overview of some programs that we're working on right now. And then I'm gonna invite actually our two counselors who are, who are working with me right now on the twenty-three hour stabilization center to jump in if they have anything. Dan knows he can interrupt me all of the time. Uh, so if I miss something as we're going through this, Dan, please just jump in. Uh, so the first piece that I wanted to make sure that we talked about was actually some programming we're doing at the library. So since our last discussions. On Tuesdays at ten AM, we've started doing some services at the library for individuals who may be struggling. Our partners are really a key part of that relationship, so our behavioral health person from the police department, Glenn Sekonic, is involved in those. Uh, but so is Love One, uh, Central City Concern. Uh, four D, which is a um, youth. Sorry, Dan, they are a youth. Uh, substance abuse group, I believe, thank you. Um, and then we also have had different partners coming in and out uh, over the course of the last one, um, couple of months, so. The key partners are Love One. Central City Concern and Forty. Uh, those are going really well. Our staff are seeing the uh, high use of the services. We feel good about the fact that the team at the library now has a date and time when they can. Let people know that they can receive some of these services in Milwaukee instead of having to get on a bus to leave Milwaukee in order to get these services. So, those have been great. I just want to thank Glenn Sekonic for his work on kind of managing those and pulling them together and then Brett. Uh, Brent, uh, the head of, Brent Husher, the head of our library, has really been a key part of that as well. Dan, did I miss anything on the Tuesday events?
No, I thought that was great. Thanks, Dan.
Okay, the next piece is that we will be doing a community conversation. We just wanted to make sure that the public was aware. Mayor, these are going to show up in your uh, speaking points at the beginning of meetings for events. Uh, but the event is going to be taking place on February twenty-first. It's a conversation to explore common assumptions and perspectives about houselessness and homelessness. And to contemplate how we as a community decide who belongs. The program is co-sponsored by Love One, the Father's Heart, Central City Concern, Milwaukee Lening Library and the Milwaukee Police Department. And we're really excited. It's gonna be a part of the Oregon Humanities Conversation Program, so. Gonna be a great conversation for individuals who are wondering how they might be able to get involved. This would be a great. Place to meet individuals providing direct services in our community. And then the final thing that I wanted to talk about at the library is the letter of interest that we submitted to Clackamas County requesting funds to open a cooling center at the library during. Heat and air quality events. Uh, that's something we've been talking about for several months, actually for years, if I'm really honest. Um, but we've never had the ability to pay the staff that we would need to pay in order to keep the doors open longer. This would allow us both the cash to be able to buy supplies for individuals who might be in crisis as well as um. If we have under expend because we don't open as many days, the ability to outfit some of our other departments with the tools they might need to be able to better. Serve our houseless community during these types of events. So we've talked about things to um, both. Keep people occupied when they're at the library. We often have families who come in who are looking for a way to entertain kids. Uh, so we're just trying to make sure that we can make this a really great experience for people who need to come in and get out of the heat. Uh, we'll find out sometime next month about those funds. We did have a brief conversation with Adam Brown at the county and he was really excited about our application, so I'm excited and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get some. Catch through that process. Okay, I mentioned Glenn already, but the police department's doing some incredible work. We actually heard from them in December, so I'm not going to go into it. A lot of detail in this space. Uh, but I just wanted to call it a couple of things that people may not know. So we are actually meeting monthly uh, with a group of houseless and um. Homeless service providers, uh, just to make sure that our police department and our various departments have all the tools that they can in order to best. Support people in crisis when they come into the buildings. It's a place for people to sort of cross-check who's in town a little bit and just say, you know. Is this person receiving services from you? If so, here's some other services that might be helpful. Uh, so in that part of the meeting, the rest of staff is heading out, but we're having. Sort of our service provider stay in the room and just really tackle some of those specific individual issues that people may be having to make sure that we're getting services directly to them. Um, one of the things that came up this week is it's really cold and I just want to call out, we recognize that it's really cold. So uh, we actually partnered with the Father's Heart over the course of the last week in order to move people on the, into housing. I really want to call out. Both on and Glenn came on, came in on days that were not their days of work. In order to help people and in some case convince people to get services and then to get them to those services. So we had two hundred and fifty people, um, maybe actually a little more than that in Clackamas County who needed these services. To get out of the cold uh, over the course of the week. Um, we have been working with Father's Heart and then Clackamas. Community, yeah, Clackamas Community College, but the Oregon campus actually opened up a shelter, so we've been working with them to make sure that they have the supplies they need and then. Also bringing people into that shelter when necessary. Anything, Dan, with the police department that I have?
I think the only thing we haven't touched on, Anne, and this is not just a police issue, you, you may be getting to it, is the twenty-three hour center and just. There's not a whole lot of news there, but just good to note.
That is next. So um, actually, Dan, do you want to talk a little bit about the twenty-three hour stabilization center?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Um, so I, I believe that council has heard about this previously, but if I am mistaken about that, my apologies. Um, the county is working right now to um. Uh, they're, they're going through the, the design and permitting process for uh, what's called a twenty-three hour stabilization center. That's gonna be. Uh, on McBride Avenue where there was formerly a um, a, a. Community placement, a, a, a corrections facility. Um, the plans right now call for an eight-bed. Twenty-three hour stabilization center, and so what that would be is something similar to. The Unity Behavioral Health Center in Portland where people are able to come in, be assessed, have their um, immediate needs met. Um, a, around behavioral health concerns and then tied to that will be a um, a short-term. Which would be like thirty to sixty-day. Temporary housing, um, as part of a, as part of a longer-term stabilization effort. There, there will be uh, the plans right now call for eight. Spaces in the twenty-three hour center side of that building and then thirteen beds in the uh, short-term shelter facility. And we have a meeting coming up on, I believe, the thirtieth uh, with the county to continue talking about a good neighbor agreement. And um, exactly how that's going to operate because we want to make sure that, um, although. The folks will be receiving care and assistance there are already parts of our community. What we don't want to do is create a situation where we are. Uh, where, where we're creating trouble for the neighbors, where we're, where we're um, creating a problem spot. And so we're trying to do this in a really intentional. Um, and, and well-thought-through way. And I know that we have um, two of our counselors here tonight, um, who are. Uh, invited to that meeting and I believe will be attending at that meeting coming up, uh, just in a couple of weeks.
Uh, I just want to add a cou- that was excellent, Dan. Thank you very much. Um, a couple of things, if anybody is interested, we're still waiting on the actual numbers for the beds. Those are the current working numbers, but those could go up or down. Just depending on what the designs end up looking like. Um. The engagement meeting is what Dan mentioned. The next meeting after that is we've actually provided a draft. Good neighbor agreement over to them as well to make sure that the county and our neighborhoods and all the, the service providers are working. Well together and have a plan about how we're going to work together. I just want to call out the councillor Stavenger, it actually did an excellent job. As did Dan Harris at creating a draft. Um, and so I feel great about that document and we've sent that over to the county. We have not received any edits back yet, but we are expecting that we'll get those in the coming weeks. So um, I think with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the counselors if you have anything you want to add on the stabilization center.
Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of thoughts, uh. As we're, I mean, this, this piece is very exciting and I think, you know, councillor Massey and I are um, engaged. And ready for that meeting on the thirtieth. Um. There are some next steps that I think it would be important for the, the city to remain at the table around. And that really gets into the request for proposals when we get to the construction of the building. To the service provider that's selected for the crisis piece of it and for the shelter piece. Um, and I think that uh, you know, it really shows. Our commitment to um, trauma-informed care and human-centered design on this project. If, if we remain um, committed and involved. And so to that end, I think. Another important piece that we should be looking at beyond this project is really what our map of services look like in Milwaukee. Um, I'm, I'm interested in digging into that a bit more. Um, councillor Massey and I met with the new executive director of the homeless. Solutions of Clackamas County, which is a coalition um, charged with um, kind of liaising between Clackamas County. And service providers, but we have a seat at that table, uh, and this is the first time that they've hired an executive director, so. It's really exciting that he's on board. Um, I think he could be a really valuable resource as we're discussing what. Uh, continuum of care looks like in Milwaukee and making sure that we're not just picking up um. Areas of need in one section of that continuum, but rather have the resources in place for, for um. You know, really seamless transition as folks are leaving the, the crisis center. You know, how are we wrapping services around them? How are we transitioning them into housing? Um, and you know, I mean, these are folks that are potentially coming from all over the county, so you know, they may have arrived in. A moment of crisis in the center, but they're, they're hopefully not leaving the center in a moment of crisis. And we have to be really thoughtful about how we um, su- support them to re-enter into their own communities. That might be. Cities that are nearby us and it might be rural communities too, so um, I, I think, you know, that's a piece that's on my mind. As we're building out this section uh, of the continuum, that we really just want to make sure that all the pieces are in place so that we can. Do this in a way that respects folks.
Councillor Massey, did you have anything you wanted to?
Uh, yeah, I would just, uh, not, not a lot. I will tell you that, um. You know, the uh, you know, the building, you know, the design, the permits, you know, that'll all happen. It'll, you know, it, it'll happen. Um, and um. So I, I think that uh, uh, councillor Stavenger has been uh, thinking, you know, sort of uh, down the. Down the road about, you know, the so, the service providers and that kind of thing, and so. We had a very good conversation with the uh, alliance uh, uh, director and that kind of thing. He's excited about this. Uh, because uh, you know, having a building and a good neighbor agreement is one thing, uh, but delivering the services is, is the hard part. And so we're trying to think uh, down that road. You know, not six months, but nine, twelve months, uh, so that we actually have a, a functioning operation and not just a building.
It should also be added, we, we have really great partners. Um, so I just wanted to call out Adam Brown and Behi Brown uh, for the work that we've been doing with them at the county. I know I've talked a lot about. Randy Johnson, Love One, and these other amazing groups we get to work with, but. We could not do this without Adam and Behi and I really appreciate how they've been showing up to these discussions.
Well, it's great to hear how that's going. Um. And I did want to just throw out there, this may or may not work, uh. But I had a conversation with councillor Stavenger, um, depending on, I don't know how much. How massive the reconstruction is and, you know, what the timeline is. But I, it occurred to me after our last meeting that. But I, it occurred to me after our last meeting that, or, yeah, after our meeting on January 2nd, that where we discussed hosting the CCA Cities Dinner, that might be good to host the CCA Cities Dinner there. If that, you know, if it could logistically work and wouldn't be in the middle of massive construction, so.
We're happy to take that to the county. I think that that could be a really great opportunity depending on the timing and just how all the pieces play together. But every city that I talk to right now is trying to figure out how to be best at this, how to, how to be supportive of people in crisis, also how to do the services in a way that's right and, and successful. So I think it's something that a lot of communities would want and I think it's something we could provide.
Great. Is that the end of your presentation?
That is the update for this month, but we'll be back in a month. We're really trying to make sure that, or it's probably about six weeks, but we're trying to make sure that everybody is in the loop and that there's new information every time I come back. So we'll get through the 23 hour stabilization conversations with the county for the next round. We'll have more information after that and we'll get back on the agenda.
Okay. No further questions from anyone? All right. Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And now we have our. Oh, we're not going to do the business code. We're not going to do our public hearing. Oh, I didn't realize that. Okay.
No, Mayor, we pulled it just because we're online and we knew that some people would be more comfortable testifying in person. So we pushed it out to the next meeting.
Okay, okay. Good to know. Then we have council reports and under that we have a discussion about meeting minutes. So I'll turn it over to our recorder to launch that discussion.
Mayor Beatty and council, for a couple more times, I get to present to you this evening. The first one is on council minutes. And I will just say that this is a good topic to bring up periodically. It features prominently on your agenda, your regular session agendas, our regular session agenda. You're asked to, most every agenda, you're asked to approve minutes and it's very important, if admittedly a little often mundane. It's important for the record, it's important for the history of not only the council as a body, but as of our city, of our community. And so tonight I bring to you a fairly brief, straightforward report and set up an opportunity for council to ask the questions. And Mayor Beatty, I added a slide towards the end of this presentation to revisit the September 12th, December 12th minutes that you pulled off consent. So just, just to go over some basics real quick. What are minutes? Minutes are the written record of a public body's actions that documents the who, when, where, and what of the body's deliberations and decisions. Now, this, this comes from the city's minutes writing guide, which was included in the staff report. And in further detail that I won't go over here, minutes are in short, not only the written record, but they're also required by state law and our city code. And I think something that's great, important to remind public bodies when we're talking about minutes is that ultimately they belong to you. This is your story as a group of civic leaders and you do have the final say in terms of what is in there and what is not. There are best practices, there are plenty of folks in my position who've done this for centuries. And we've developed a certain, what is best to do, what is not best to do, but really you guys are the, the final say in terms of what is written down in Milwaukee's history. So just a couple of notes there and then the minute writing guide that we put together here at the city also has some do's and don'ts and they do cite some experts in the field, Jurassic Parliament's one of them. But in, the ones I wanted to pull out tonight are the things that I've kind of heard come up. Usually when someone wants to discuss a set of minutes that I've been prepared, it's, it's kind of falls into the line of, of the discussion and capturing what it was at the body and then sometimes staff, the group we sometimes call it, what, what's discussed? What's the consensus reached? And, you know, I can only say that as somebody who's written minutes for, for a decade and worked with several other folks who've done it for a longer time or lesser amount of time, that is really where the rub of writing minutes comes down to. How, knowing what needs to be in the minutes in terms of the discussion, what needs to be captured, how much to capture it and, and balancing that with the need to keep the minutes, not verbatim, but not also, I, I'm not one who strictly thinks action minutes are always a great way to go. There's a number of cities who have moved in that direction to action only minutes, meaning that a whole discussion can be happened, but the only thing that's recorded is the final vote. I don't think that's where we want to go. I also don't think we want to write down every single word you say. So I think we're somewhere in the middle and sometimes we err on one side and sometimes we are on the other side. Now, there's myriad of factors that play into that, but on the end of the day, and I think Nicole's on here too, so Nicole, if you have our deputy records on here, if you want to have any thoughts about this as well, you know, Nicole and I are trying to write the best story we can for the city to capture the tenor of your conversations. And sometimes we miss chunks and sometimes things that you think are important to capture, frankly, honestly fly right over my head. So, you know, there is absolutely no harm or no, no foul in, in pulling minutes and asking for a section to be reviewed and asking us to revisit the video on that. That is absolutely part of the process. So I, I hope council feels comfortable to do that. So some of the, the key best practices that are pulled out in that minutes guide is that the details of the discussions, there are, there are minute writing experts who will tell you, don't put too much detail in there. Again, we do what we call summers, summary minutes, and so we fall somewhere in the middle. We want to capture some of the story and some of the tenor of discussion. And then there's sometimes a discussion about personal remarks. And as a minute writer, sometimes it is easier to err on the side of using fewer words when summarizing a fairly contentious part of a meeting. It's just, sometimes makes for better reading, sometimes makes for less, less better reading, less interesting readings, I suppose. But, but I, when it comes to personal remarks, I have often found that we err on the side of being more general and summative. So those are the two best practices I was going to pull out there. And then the last note I was going to have is just to make sure the council and the, the general public are aware that there are at least two places that you can read minutes. We, we aim to get a set of minutes to council to review within a month, within two meetings. And I think we're generally, we do a generally good job of staying on that track. And once the minutes have been approved by council, they are posted on the meeting page. So if you want to remember what happened back in September, for example, you can go back to those meeting pages on the web, on the milwaukeeorgan.gov/meetings page and you can get, find those meeting minutes are posted there. And then we also, we have an electronic records management system, which I've talked about before, and we put all the final packet, which includes the final agendas and the minutes and all the reports and all the exhibits and everything that went to that meeting. That packet record goes into our electronic system and that electronic system has a portal on a publicly viewable web portal called the Vigil Archives page, and I got the link there too. So you can look up packets either way to those and have the minute to, to. So Mayor Beatty, the next slide was just a prompt on the September, December 12th study session. So I might pause here and to see if council has any questions or thoughts about minutes generally before perhaps turn to that December set.
Counselor Massey?
You know, echo a few things that Scott said, but let me preface that, that say that writing minutes is hard if you haven't done it before. It's, it's actually hard to get that balance that, that, that Scott was talking about. I actually had a boss of mine one time tell me, he says, Lieutenant Massey, never pass up the chance to write the minutes of a meeting. You control what the meeting was about and what the decisions were. Now, I'm not suggesting that, but, you know, he, he at least understood the, the power of the minutes. But let me just give you a little, a little story of my own experience on the, on the planning commission. And, and I will tell you that we have it pretty good with a professional group of people and, and Scott and Nicole doing this for us, but the other groups within our city don't have it quite as good. And so when I was chair of the planning commission, we had a very junior person, I'm pretty sure they were interned at the time doing the minutes. And as I reviewed the minutes, you know, they're hard, they're trying to keep up with things and there were some inaccuracies that I pointed out to the intern. And I, I had the, the exact reaction that I didn't want in that the minutes then turned into a transcript. And I think that they were going through the YouTube video and transcribing everything. So I'm with, I'm with Scott. I think brevity is probably better because if you really have to get into that kind of detail, you know, the YouTube video is the transcript and you can adjudicate any, anything there. So I will say to Scott and Nicole, good job. I know this isn't easy, but I think, I think you're doing well and, and in a thankless task.
Thank you. I will say that, I, I mean, I do, I think you're doing a great job overall. I mean, this is the beginning of my 10th year on council and I, the minutes are definitely shorter than they were when I started on council, but I don't, in general, I don't think that's a bad thing. I don't think you need the, you know, she said this and he said that. I do worry, the one thing that I worry that we aren't always capturing is when there is a consensus on something and when there's not a consensus on something. And I'm talking now, of course, if we have an actual vote, that's captured. But I'm talking about things we discuss and sometimes I read the minutes and it sounds like there was consensus around something someone said when there really wasn't. So I mean, that's the one thing I try to, I try to read for, I guess. And I encourage others to try to read for. I do think we need to capture those moments of disagreement for the record. We don't have to get into, you know, a big thing about what the two views were, but by at least reflecting that there was not consensus, then someone can be triggered to go back and watch the tape if there's some question. And that's my general comment and then we can talk about the December 12th minutes. But did anybody else have other things they wanted to bring up? I found Scott's, like I looked at some of the references in Scott's report and it was interesting and it was good food for thought. It was, it was good exercise to kind of go through that and think about it.
Yeah, it, it's, it's a, it's a flow and it's, it's one of the less, probably more mundane things that the council has, has to do, but it's very important and, and you know, especially it's important to do it while it's fresh in your mind so it can, you know, help us accurately capture that information.
Right, right. So on the, on the September 12th minutes, which are RS8 in our package, at the end of that, under council reports was where we, where I, where, well, several of us spoke about our meeting with the governor. And it's just referenced briefly, but I, I mean, I, I outlined what was discussed with the governor, sort of to the best of my ability, best of my recollection at the time, in part for the two commissioners who weren't there, but our counselors who weren't there, but also for the record, because it was a, you know, it was really a public meeting because there were three of us there. So it was about creating the public record of what that was. And so I guess I feel like we need a little more detail. We need a little bit of that filled in here. And I guess I also feel like we need a reference to Counselor Kosterbody's concerns about not having been notified of the meeting in advance. And again, I don't think we need to get into details, long quotations or anything, but I just think we need the, the thing to reflect that because that was an important part of the meeting. So I don't know if people want to discuss that. I guess, oh, Counselor Kosterbody.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually just wanted to thank you for, for wanting to include that part. I really do appreciate it. I, I do agree with you that I think it should be part of the record.
We, yeah. Sorry, Mayor Beatty. In light of that, we'd be happy to take the minutes back and, and review and we perhaps can work up some language and include in the next February 6th consent agenda.
That'd be great. I appreciate that. And, and maybe even Justin wants to listen to that part for, in terms of helping, you know, sort of build, you know, just because we had had a, an unnoticed public meeting with three counselors present, what we need to do to be as transparent and in trying to cure that as possible. Yeah, that would be great. I appreciate that. All right. Any other comments on the subject of minutes? Okay, seeing none?
May I just, before we keep going real fast, I just want to make sure we have a consensus on the consensus. So we're adding consensus to the minutes generally, otherwise everything's going to stay as is. Does that work? Looking for nods? Okay, thanks.
Okay. Legislative and regional issues. Scott also has a slideshow for this one. All right.
One more to go. You're all for bearing with me. Okay. So in this one, on my end, last time we talked about how it's a short session and we really didn't have a ton of legislation being tracked yet. I saw somewhere in email even earlier today that I don't know that we've even gotten bill numbers yet. So we're still fairly pre-session. I did grab some key dates because that's what we watched before. Again, short, short session, there are not a ton of dates. February 5th, the session was scheduled to begin. The revenue, the only revenue forecast that's coming out during the short session is on the February 7th and then March 10th is the constitutional signing date. Got that online. Last time, there were two topic areas that I took away as in terms of what council wanted to track. Measure 110 and Mayor Beatty, I think you may have some notes for your colleagues on that in a moment. And then HB, I think it was HB 3414 land use regulation from 23, the 23 session. And I just heard that topic mentioned. I apologize, I, I didn't capture who was tracking that and if there was something to be watched. So those are the two, the two things that I have. That's really, my next screen is just a reminder where we get information from and then that's that. So I will stop sharing and then just, are there other topics that council wants us to track as we head towards legislative session?
I mean, I do know that Counselor Stavenger is following a couple of things for her day job, but maybe as well as for impact on Milwaukee. On the HB 3414, supposedly there's a new draft kicking around. Is that what Anne wants to talk about? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I was just going to say it arrived tonight. So we do have a version of that. Joseph's not in town at the moment. I'm going to meet with him when he comes back and we'll look at it one more time before commenting.
All right. If you could please send that around, because I will be here when, yeah, Joseph gets back. I'd like a chance to read it. I sent around some stuff today on measure 110 and what it is anticipated is coming in the legislative bill. You have previously gotten from LOC their recommendations on measure 110, which were a, which were a collective effort between LOC, the Sheriff's Association, the District Attorney's Association, maybe the Chiefs of Police. So I don't know, I'm hoping somebody is going to give us a cheat sheet as to what's in which, you know, what, what is not in the legislatures that's in LOC's, but I haven't seen anything like that yet. I do encourage people to try and follow that over the next two weeks. I won't be around, but by the time we come back on March 5th or February 5th, they'll be in session. So we do need to be prepared at that meeting if we want to take a position on anything. So I do encourage people to try and follow emails from the LOC that may come out on that. And I do have a meeting tomorrow with the mayor's consortium. And if I get any more intel, I will definitely share that before I leave town on Friday. Counselor Stavenger, did you have other ones you wanted to talk about?
Not specific legislative concepts at this point, but I just wanted to let folks know that.
Not specific legislative concepts at this point, but I just wanted to let folks know that I'll be tracking the conversation around housing, behavioral health, substance use, measure 110 reform, and transportation planning. So as we move toward the 2025 long session and the transportation package, some of those conversations are already ramping up. So I just, I want to flag those topics. And then for those of you who have extra time on your hands or are elections junkies, it'd be kind of interesting, I'm looking at you, Scott. It's interesting, I think this next round, and especially as we move into budgets and we're looking at funding for election systems with some of the major changes that are happening around ranked choice voting and then the changes to Portland City Council. Elections systems have to run ballots through basically two machines. And so then we're going to see delays in the results. So when you, if you're used to, you know, clicking refresh at 8:01 on election night and finding out what the verdicts are, you're probably not going to be able to do that anymore. So just wanted to kind of flag that. If we hear any conversations about resources for elections, that might be something that we would want to advocate for.
Will we expect that change in Clackamas County, even though this county isn't doing ranked choice voting?
No, that, that change won't happen in Clackamas County, but I would say that because so many state races are sometimes swayed by Multnomah County being very populous, that we could see delays in results that we're tracking as well. And then, I'm sorry, Mayor, did you want to just talk about legislative things? Are you, are you open to all legislative updates or? Okay, so the other thing that I wanted to mention is on January 22nd, from 9:00 to 4:30 in Salem, and I can share this information via email with folks as well, or I can even put it into the chat. There's a research symposium around measure 110. So if folks are really interested in digging in a lot more to this issue, learning about the perspectives from a health viewpoint, from harm reduction, family services, housing, law enforcement, kind of all facets of this. It might be really good to participate. There's an in-person registration link, and there's also a virtual attendance. So if you can't make it to Salem, but you want to tune in online, there's that option as well. And then I just wanted to give a quick update on the C4 meeting. So this is the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee. This is the full county, so this, all the, all the cities and and transportation, some transportation and water districts, I think, I think water, definitely transportation districts. We met on the 4th of January, talking about some of the tolling subcommittee updates. There's a group at the state level that is a tolling rulemaking advisory committee. And there's engagement efforts that are going on around the state. There was one in Wilsonville. I can't remember the date of that one, but Saturday, let's see what the date was, Saturday, the 6th. There was one in Gladstone, and I wasn't able to make it to the event, but I heard that it was really well attended. So lots of folks talking about their opinions and experiences around tolling, diversion projects, all of that information being kind of correlated, and the legislature will be looking at that feedback in terms of the transportation, you know, the direction that they move forward with tolling. They're, they talked a bit more about housing production. So again, C4 is not just about transportation, but you've heard a lot about transportation from that group in the last year specifically because of the regional transportation plan. They're transitioning into urban growth boundaries, expansion, the buildable lands inventory, a lot of the same topics that you'll hear from the mayor in her updates around the the work, is it a work group or a subcommittee that you're a part of? Mayor?
Subcommittee, yeah.
So we did talk about that. I think I mentioned at the last meeting, but I'll mention again, the city of Sherwood has put forth an expansion proposal. So far, they're the only city within the urban growth boundary that has put forth the proposal. And I found it very interesting, and we might want to talk with them, maybe get a copy of their presentation because they have areas of missing middle housing that are already built into the code for specific areas of their expansion, so that it's really, you know, the, the community is kind of built out in mixed types of housing. We talked about refinement around Metro 111, or I'm sorry, 110. We talked about the transportation package, changes related to the gas tax going away. And then they gave updates around some of the metro policy committees. There's a joint committee on transportation and the Metro Policy Advisory Committee. So NPAC is handling most of the UGB expansion conversations, and then JPAC is talking about Safe Streets For All and the Sunrise Corridor, which is right here in Clackamas County. And that if you travel to 24 to 12 out through Clackamas to Boring and sometimes out to the mountain, if you're going that direction, you have passed through the Sunrise Corridor. So I just got named as a committee member for that visioning project. So if anyone's interested in knowing the approach that they're taking around land use and equitable building, kind of like the whole built environment parfait, then I'm happy to talk about that. And I think, I think that is it. I'll put information about that research symposium in the chat.
Just circling back to your point about the urban growth boundary, I think that it will only be Sherwood. I think all the deadlines passed to submit your request. So for this cycle of UGB expansion, which Metro does every six years, this will be the only expansion talked about. And the mayor of Sherwood is really insightful on a lot of this housing stuff. He was definitely one of the people at the table concerned about how measure 30, how HB 3414 was going to facilitate only McMansions and not middle housing and not other things. So he's, he's really sharp and insightful, and if we wanted him to come talk about, you know, their plan, I'm sure he would be happy to do so. But anyway, yeah. Any other council reports or any questions for councillor Stavon George on anything she brought up? There was also, there's been a couple of news coverage articles about that January 6th meeting in Gladstone on the, so you can go to Google News and find reporting on the tolling meeting, if that's of interest. Okay. No other council reports? I guess we are ready to adjourn the regular session and go to our executive session? Anything before I read the little script about that? Well, okay. After the regular session, council will meet in executive session pursuant to Oregon revised statute 192662D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room, or in this case, we will be leaving, we will be closing this Zoom room and opening a different one. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of this session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the regular session.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the regular session. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. None heard, we are adjourned, and we have a separate link, I believe, for the executive session. So see everybody in five minutes.